Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The time is now 9:30. My name is Mike Kelly. I'm the Chairman of the Board for the Johnson County Board of Commissioners. It is Thursday, July 27, 2023. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Board. Welcome. I'd ask the Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Faust is absent. Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Alabran on Zoom.
Alabran, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
I'm here as well. Would you all please join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance stipulates that the United States of America and the United Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for being at our meeting today, whether in person or online. I would ask that you join me in checking your cell phone and other noise-making devices and making sure that they are on silent. We are going to start today with a few proclamations. So I am going to go to the dais. And as you can see here in the front row, we have some distinguished veterans with us today to celebrate Thursday, July 27, 2023, as Korean War Veterans Armistice Day. Seventy years ago, seventy years ago, the Korean War signed the armistice recognizing a ceasefire. Approximately 1.7 members, 1.7 million, excuse me, members of the United States Armed Services Forces served in that theater of combat in the defense of South Korea. More than 400 Kansans lost their lives in the Korean War, 10 from Johnson County. All fought bravely. Three Kansans, though, were awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor for their service in the Korean War, two of which were from Johnson County. Stanley T. Adams of the United States Army was born in DeSoto and raised in Olatha, and Jack Davenport of the United States Marine Corps was from Mission, Kansas. We are proud to proclaim July 27, 2023, as Korean War Veterans Armistice Day. We do this in honor of all the brave men and women who served our great nation during the Korean War. We thank them for their military service. Accepting today's proclamation on behalf of this distinguished group of veterans is
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
We'll grab a photograph. Did you want to say any words?
Yeah, I did.
By all means, sir.
If you bear with me for about four minutes, there is something I would like to read concerning the Korean War. This was written by a Marine veteran of the Korean War by the name of Sam Fiedler Jr. It's called "The Forgotten War." This war was different than any we have ever seen. It started in June 1950 and ended in July of '53 in a place called Korea. And this war was forgot when the winters can get to 40 below and summers are blazing hot. They came across that parallel they called the Thirty-Eight, overran Seoul and stormed the Freedom Gate. They came down that peninsula like a steamroller on parade. Task Force Smith was the first one sent to stop their charades. But a G.I. shirt behind a mound of dirt is no match for an armored attack. We were pushed into the Busan perimeter with only water to our backs. For two more months, we fought and died while the North Koreans were calling all the shots. Back home, it was called a police action, but they forgot to send along the cops. Now the Joint Chiefs and General Doug were having a round or two. MacArthur finally got his way and said, "This is what we're going to do. We'll make an amphibious landing at a place called Incheon, and simultaneously, we will burst out of Busan. We'll then take by surprise and cut them off from behind." But the North Koreans had something else in mind. We liberated Seoul and handed the South back to Sichuan Rui. Then it was a mad dash to the Yalu as we watched the enemy flee. It was home for Christmas because became the battle cry, but two and a half more years would come and go, and many more would die. The Chinese gave a warning, "North, you should not trod, or we will put your armies underneath the sod." But they were poised along the border, around a million strong, but our leaders would not believe what we saw. They said that we were wrong. They trapped us in the reservoir, but we battled our way to the sea. The Chinese lost 37,000 men as we fought to get free. On the other side of Korea, it was a different type of war. It was fight, pull back, run, fight, and run some more. With the loss of General Walker, Ridgway took command. He said, "The Han is as far as we go. Here, we make our stand." We fought back to the Thirty-Eighth, and now they wanted to talk. If things didn't go their way, they would take a walk. Truman relieved MacArthur and brought him home to stay, and he turned the Far East Command over to Ridgway. It was the battles of the hills as Van Fleet took command for two more years. Like a mountain goat, up and down we ran. Hills like Hetty, Dagmar, Bunker, Pork Shop. Two, Vegas, Reno, and Carson, just to name a few. Day and night artillery boomed across no man's land. In the skies over Korea, our flyers took command. Then the peace talks started up again at a place called Panmunjom. If we talk, walk, plot, and plan until the job was done. For 38 months, we fought for someone else's liberty. And finally, the truce was signed, and now South Korea is free. And when we got home and ran into our friends, they would say, "Hey, I haven't seen you for a while. Where have you been?" And when to heaven we do go, to St. Peter will tell just another forgotten warrior reporting, "Sir, I've served my hitch in hell."
Do you guys don't mind? Can I take a photograph?
Okay.
Let's just stand right here, and this guy will... How's that? All right. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. Couple other things we wanted to recognize today. I'd like to welcome Shannon Rigney and Harry Heflin regarding the Feed the Needs Awards.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Shannon Rigney, Finance Manager for the Department of Corrections. I'm here with Harry Heflin, Director of Audit Services. Harry and I were the co-chairs for this year's Feed the Need campaign and are here today to share the results. The campaign was held this year from January 1 through June 30, and we saw an increase in in-person events. In addition, construction was brought back, and this year, Mental Health Adolescent Center for Treatment won the trophy for their creation of Arrowhead Stadium. It was a successful campaign this year with nearly 257,000 pounds of food, which is the equivalent of $64,000 in cash. This is a 92% increase over the 2022 campaign. These distributions are split between 10 local food pantries, and the checks are available for them today in the Treasury Office. I just want to thank all of the Feed the Need campaign representatives. They put so much work into this, and without them, this wouldn't happen. I especially want to thank Ashley Weir, Joe Iger, Tim Dodderidge, and Brian Dowling for all the extra work they do behind the scenes, and they make sure they keep us on track and keep the campaign running. And Harry?
Thank you, Shannon. Harry Heflin, Audit Services. As Shannon pointed out, we had a very successful Feed the Need campaign this year, but it could not have been done without the representatives that are listed up here, the people she recognized who provided the logistical and administrative support, but probably more importantly, all those employees who participated through the events this year. It was a very successful year, so thank you very, very much. What I'd like to do at this time is to... We have three awards. The Chairman's Award, that's the award for most donations by a department, agency, or office. This year's winner was Department of Corrections. We have the Commissioners' Award, most donations per employee, and again, Department of Corrections. And then we have the Rick Beckwith Cup, highest percentage of increased collection over the prior year, and this year's winner was Department of Health and Environment. So if I could have representatives from the Department of Corrections and Health and
One other recognition we wanted to make this morning. This is the Government Finance Officers Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And I appreciate that this is not a new award for Johnson County, but again, continued recognition of excellence when it comes to our budget presentation. This is the highest honor that they can receive, and so I'd like to welcome Robin Symes to accept this award on behalf of an entire budget department that has done fantastic work, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please, by all means.
Thank you. This is the highest form of recognition in government budgeting for fiscal year '23. This marks the 31st year that Johnson County has received the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. For 2022, for last year, we did receive a Special Performance Measures recognition, and that was the first time we had received that, just for the, again, the new work and the updated work that we're trying to do with performance measures. In October this year, we'll be submitting our 2024 application for our 32nd consecutive year for the GFOA award. At this time, I would like to thank and recognize our staff. We have Mark Dapp, who is here. They can stand or wave. I'll let them decide. Leslie Friedel, Gail Kaufman, Jack Haybig, and Ted Clemens. And then I would like to go ahead and take this opportunity to thank Scott Neufeld, who has just recently retired. He is here as well for his 30 years of service to the county and in the budget department, as well as others.[1085.12][1085.12][applause] We've appreciated his leadership and extensive knowledge that he's brought to the organization, and he will be missed.
I would like to say a few words. This is, first of all, congratulations to Robin as the new budget director, so I'd like to pause and say congratulations.[1110.26][1110.26][applause] And then also, I know that we'll have a recognition for Scott later this afternoon, but this is his last time being in this room that I'm aware of unless he plans to come back and speak.[1124.76][1124.76][laughing] But just a few things about Scott. He started in 1994 in the library. He's worked in human services. He went back, he went into the budget office in 1998. And in '21 and '22, he also served part-time or most time in the county manager's office as bureau chief, and there's so many things that we'll share this afternoon. But some things that stand out to me are his leadership through the Great Recession and through the pandemic, when we had to make cuts very quickly because the economy, because of so many things going on in the world. His leadership has been invaluable, but there are things outside of the finance area that he's contributed as an executive team member. And some highlights there are the leadership and partnership to work through changes with our transit system and our KCATA, and then also with Juneteenth. And those are just a few examples, but Scott, you've made an impact. I will personally miss you because you've helped me through budgets as manager and as been here for 13 years working with you, and we will miss your leadership, but your legacy as a team that you've left behind and built, and you should be proud of that and all of your accomplishments. So thanks for allowing me a few minutes during the budget award, which has a lot to do with the full team, including Scott and Robin.
Okay. At this time, we'll turn to our public comment portion of the agenda for speakers to address items of commission business that are not on a future part of today's agenda. If you wish to speak on an action item, we'll again remind you to please register for that action item. When you come to the dais, we ask you to state your name and the city in which you reside. We limit comments to two minutes. There's a clock that will assist you. We ask that members of the public refrain from remarks that are offensive or impertinent or slanderous. If we happen to delve into that category, I'll give a warning. If it continues, we'll ask you to step aside from the dais.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Have six votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. Let's move on to item number two, please. I'd invite Ms. Michelle Lenninger from Planning to review this matter regarding the conditional use permits for accessory buildings and transitioning those to accessory building use permits. Ms. Lenninger, thank you for your report last week. Anything further you'd like to note regarding this change?
Nothing further. Just a reminder, this is kind of a housekeeping issue with amendments that we had already done with accessory buildings. This is just to clarify that the existing conditional use permits will transfer to the new accessory building use permits. And those that will have that transfer occur, we are sending letters to provide them with the information on their previous conditional use permit and a bunch of other information about the changes and what their new number will be and the verbiage and where they can find that information.
Very good. Commissioner O'Hara.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I want to congratulate the Planning Department and the Zoning Board and Planning Commission that have, that's gone through the approval process on this. The conditional use permit was a very burdensome process for the people that were applying for them and for the staff and for the board. So thank you for streamlining the process.
See no further questions. Is there a motion? Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. I moved that the board adopt Resolution Number 059-23, which approves certain amendments to the zoning regulations to allow existing conditional use permits for the accessory buildings to transition to accessory building use permits with an unincorporated Johnson County as set forth within the resolution.
Hanslick, second.
Moved by Commissioner Myers and seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Any further questions or comments? Then at this time, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Six votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll consider item number four, which is a contract with Jim Jam, Inc. for the repair and replacement project. Mr. Barron, thank you for your report on this matter at Agenda Review last week. Any further items you'd like to add to this repair project at the New Century Adult Detention Center?
Good morning, Chairman Kelly. Tony Barron, Director of Facilities Management. I have nothing further to add, and will stand for any questions that come.
Very good. Questions? Comments? Okay, how about a motion? Commissioner Hanslick.
I move to authorize a contract with Jim Jam, Inc. for the NCA DC AHU 12 to 18 Repair and Replacement Project located at 27745 West 159th Street, New Century, Kansas 66031 in the amount of $721,891.
Myers, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick and seconded by Commissioner Myers. Seeing no questions or comments, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Six votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Barron. And item number five, we have George Hopper here from the airport to discuss this locomotive maintenance, repair, and service contract. Mr. Hopper, thank you for being back this morning. Appreciated your comments last week about these contracts for locomotive repair and service. Anything more you'd like to add?
Good morning, Chairman Kelly and George Hopper from the airport. No, sir. I have nothing more to add and stand by for any comment.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions on this contract? Okay, how about a motion? Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. I move to authorize a term and supply contract with FMW Solutions, LLC for locomotive maintenance, repair, and service at a cost not to exceed $200,000 for a period of one year with the option to renew for four additional one-year periods.
Hanslick, second.
All right. Any further questions or comments on this one? All right. See, nonetheless, the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Six votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you very much, George. All right. On to the action agenda as presented. We're going to start with number six, which is Resolution Number 058-23. This is an application for preliminary plat and final plat at the lakes of Conestoga. We have Michelle Cricks from the Planning Department with us this morning on this item that is within Commissioner Allen Brand's district. Ms. Cricks, welcome. Thank you for presenting this at Agenda Review last week. Anything further you'd like to provide?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle Cricks with Johnson County Planning. Nothing additional to add, but just a reminder that this is coming to you with a recommendation of approval from the Airport Commission and planning staff, and no one from the public spoke at the hearing for the Airport Commission.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Commissioner O'Hara?
Yeah, it's just a quick question. If my memory serves me right, there was an issue with the water features in this development and that there was going to be some sort of mitigation to make sure that geese are not, that this is not a habitat for the geese. Is that correct?
That is correct. That was addressed with the first plat that came through in 2021 with that original 95 lot development. And there is wildlife mitigation with the language on the plat, and they also have a wildlife mitigation plan that they do address any, you know, to make sure that there are no permanent habitat for, say, geese or any.
And this has been successful? There's not been any issues?
Not to my knowledge, no. But the applicant is here, and if there's additional questions, he can address it.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments on this matter? Seeing none, how about a motion? Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 058-23 approving the city of Gardner, application number PP-23-01, a preliminary plat for the lakes of Constoga, application number FP-23-02, a final plat for the lakes of Constoga, second plat, and application number FP23-03, a final plat, home community located southeast of the Santa Fe Street and Constoga Drive for the reasons and subject to the stipulations as set forth in the resolution.
Hanslick, second with addition that after final plat for the lakes of Conestoga, third plat for two new lots with an existing manufactured mobile home community.
So friendly amended, so moved by Commissioner Myers and seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Any further questions or comments regarding the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Six votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
And if I could take a quick moment of personal privilege here and thank Michelle Cricks for her dedicated service to Johnson County. I understand that she'll be taking a leadership position with the city of Leewood, which is our loss, but definitely Leewood's gain. And I know we have plenty of work with the city of Leewood as they continue to grow. So we appreciate your dedicated work and service to our community and wish you the best of luck with the city of Leewood.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. All right. On to number seven, which is Resolution Number 061-23. This is a request for an oversized accessory building at 19500 Claire Road. Karen Miller from the Planning Department here with us on this matter that is within Commissioner Allen Brand's district. Appreciated the really attractive building that is proposed here. And thank you for presenting that at Agenda Review last week. Anything more you'd like to add?
Karen Miller with Planning Department, no nothing more to add. Just to note that this application was recommended for approval by both the zoning board and planning staff, and I have not been contacted by any public with any questions.
Very good. Questions or comments on this one? Okay, how about a motion? Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 061-23, which approves an accessory building use permit request to allow oversized accessory buildings with a total area of approximately 3,500 square feet on approximately 3.9 acres for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth within the resolution.
Very good. Is there a second?
O'Hara, second.
Moved by Commissioner Myers and seconded by Commissioner O'Hara. Further questions or comments? All right, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Have six votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you very much for the presentation. And next, I'd like to conduct a public hearing for the consideration of authorization of funding for the construction phase of the Turkey Creek Pump Station Peak Excess Flow Treatment Facility Dechlorination System Project. Aaron Witt is here from the Johnson County Wastewater Department. Mr. Witt, any further report you'd like to provide regarding this dechlorination system project?
Good morning, Aaron Witt with Wastewater. Just one clarification. Commissioner Fast asked last week about the completion date for this project, and it's scheduled for November of 2024.
Thank you very much, Mr. Witt. I'm going to ask you to step back real quick, and I'm going to open the public hearing right now for Resolution Number WD23-011. Would anybody like the opportunity to speak regarding this resolution? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask open questions for Mr. Witt. Okay, how about a motion? Commissioner Hanslick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the board adopt Resolution Number WD23-011 authorizing funds for the construction phase of the Turkey Creek Pump Station Peak Excess Flow Treatment Facility Dechlorination System Project, SMTC Contract 43, in an amount not to exceed
So moved by Commissioner Hanslick and--
Myers, second.
Myers, second. Questions or comments? Commissioner O'Hara?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Aaron, are we seeing a stabilization of construction costs, or are we still seeing an upwards inflationary swing?
We're still seeing the inflationary swing. We are seeing certain commodities start to level out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions on this dechlorination system project? All right. If there are none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Six votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
All right. And Mr. Witt, a companion item here, the consideration of a contract with Mega KC Corporation for construction of this dechlorination system project. Any further report on this construction contract with Mega? Nope.
Further comments?
Questions or comments? How about a motion? Commissioner Hanslick?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners authorize a contract with Mega KC Corporation to construct the Turkey Creek Pump Station Peak Excess Flow Treatment Facility Dechlorination System Project, SMTC Contract 43, in the amount of $1,302,946 per invitation for bid number 2023-030.
So moved by Commissioner Hanslick, and I will second. Any questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Six votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Witt. At this time, let's move to Reports and Communications. First, a manager's memo from our county manager, Ms. Penny Post Oak Ferguson.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I would like to ask Sarah Van Lundy to come forward. The Arts Council of Johnson County launches Johnson County COVID recovery grants for artists. And Sarah, I'd like for you to cover this item, please. grants for artists, and Sarah, I'd like for you to cover this item, please. Sure. Good morning. Sarah Van Landite, Arts Council of Johnson County. With me today is Katie Cohen, our new Programs and Communications Assistant. And I wanted to thank you, Penny, and thank you Commissioners for the opportunity to share some information about the Recovery Grants for Artists program. The grant program is funded by SLFRF Funds, and we are grateful to the county for their investment in helping our creative industries recover. Applications for the Artist Grant Program opened on Monday, July 17th, on our, the ACJC website, which is artsjoko.org. The application can be found on our Programs tab under Arts and Community Recovery Programs, and the deadline to apply is my birthday, actually, August 18th, so I get to start reviewing grants. Awarded grant funds may be used for business operations, purchase of equipment, rent or mortgages, payroll, and other business-related activities that provide recovery relief. To help artists be successful in their application, we are hosting several workshops and open office hours. Our first workshop was last night. I'm going to turn it over briefly to Katie Cohen, and she can talk about the workshops.
Hi, Katie Cohen with the Arts Council of Johnson County. We are hosting two Artist Grant workshops, one with Lenexa Arts Council, which was last night, and one with Interurban Art House on August 3rd. The workshops are designed to answer questions, go through applications with the artists, and relieve any stress about applying. Additionally, Interurban Art House will host open office hours during the two weeks leading up to the grant deadline to assist artists with their applications, and I am happy to stand for questions.
You said August 3rd at the Interurban Art House. What time was that?
6:00 to 7:30 p.m.
Very good. And there's office hours for the final two weeks before the application deadline?
Correct.
Very good. Any questions or comments? I'd just like to say thank you, and thank you again to the partnership with our federal representatives for allowing us the American Rescue Plan opportunity, and I'm glad that we're putting it into work directly to those in Johnson County. Artists were uniquely affected by the pandemic, and I'm glad that we have not only a great arts council, but others, artists within the community that are helping get this money to artists. And so thank you very much for your work, and I'm excited to see some applications, and happy birthday in advance.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next, Chairman, is recognition for EMS. So I would like Melody Morales to come forward to represent the department, and I think there's others here with her as well. But they have received the American Heart Association's Mission Lifeline EMS Gold Achievement Award. Melody?
Hi, I'm Melody Morales from the Office of the Medical Director. I was just going to tell you a little bit about the award. So HAA Mission Lifeline EMS recognition has been happening since 2014, and it continues to celebrate the achievements and the pre-hospital providers on their care for STEMI and stroke patients. And EMS in Johnson County have received this award. It's been in service, like I said, since 2014, so we applied starting in 2016, and we've gotten the highest level award since 2016. So that's a great achievement for the EMS system. And like Penny had mentioned, we received the American Heart Association's Mission Lifeline Gold Achievement Award, which is the highest level, and the new award this year was American Heart Association's Mission Lifeline System of Care Target Heart Attack Award. So in both of those areas, they have succeeded. So, thank you. Any questions?
Just a hearty congratulations. I know we get the opportunity to celebrate EMS and celebrate the Medical Examiner's Office several times with national accreditation, with amazing awards now eight years in a row. It just goes to show you how amazing of a team we have here in Johnson County, and we're proud of you and we're grateful for your service. And thank you for helping keep our community healthy and safe.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Next, I'll ask Jay Leibsig to come forward and discuss Rural Comprehensive Plan 2023 Annual Review.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Jay Leibsig, the Planning, Housing, and Community Development Director. This item is brought before you. It's the annual review from the Planning Commission concerning the Rural Comprehensive Plan. It's consistent with Kansas Statute 19-2958, which requires the Planning Commission to annually review the plan and determine if any portion of it has become obsolete or is not consistent. This year, the Planning Commission did review that, and they're making a recommendation for two items that be reviewed this next year. No action is required by the BOC at this time. The two items that the Planning Commission is recommending be reviewed are updating the New Century and Executive Airport Comprehensive Compatibility Plans, which are currently in progress, and we expect to have that review and that work completed this year. We're actually looking at having a public hearing before the Planning Commission, probably in October. And then also, the review and update of the Comprehensive Arterial Road Network Plan, particularly regarding major roadways located in the northwest area of the county. As you know, with the recent annexation by the city of DeSoto, there's been a lot of change and development in that area. So that, we recently went through an update for the rural area, in the northwest area, for the rural policy area in the northwest part of the county. But the next step then would be to review and update the Karna Plan for that area as well, or for the entire county as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have that full report is attached to the cover memorandum as well.
Thank you very much, Jay. Questions or comments from the Board? Okay, well, Jay, thank you very much. And obviously, the work at New Century and Executive Airports would lead to the necessity of updating this comprehensive plan, and obviously, as you mentioned, the annexation in the northwest part of the community obviously changes the nature and landscape there of major arterial roadways. So thank you for your work and for the work of the Planning Commission. Do see a question here from Commissioner Hanslick.
Yes, I appreciated the report. It was a very helpful overview of the conversations, but I thought it was especially interesting in the report that it says that due to annexations, the physical size of the unincorporated area has decreased approximately 121 square miles from 295 square miles in 1986 to 174 square miles in 2022. The unincorporated area still accounts for approximately 36% of the total square miles in the county. And I know even just a few years ago, when I started on this commission, it was 40%. So it's interesting to see the growth and the changes in the county and the impact on the unincorporated area. So again, thank you for the report. Appreciate it.
And thank you to the work of the Planning Commission as well for this report. Commissioner O'Hara?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There has been reports, and I'm sure that you have been aware of them. One of them was in the Kansas City Star that Panasonic will be eligible for another $6.8 billion on the project in DeSoto. So as we go forward, I think that we need to take that into consideration, that this project does not need any more of county money. They are going to be drowning in money. This is a $4 billion project, and the total public investments, if they do, and it appears that they will be getting another $6.8 billion, will be $8 billion. So we just need to move forward very prudently and make sure that our taxpayers are not further burden, although we are all further burdened by the increased in electrical rates due to the enormous energy requirements that will be required by the Panasonic project. So the costs continue to roll in for all of us.
Any further comments on the Rural Comprehensive Plan review? Seeing none, Jay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Chairman?
Go ahead.
Final item is Notice of Public Hearing. The city of Westwood notified us that they will be conducting a public hearing on Thursday, September 14th at 7:00 p.m. The public hearing pertains to the establishment of a tax increment finance district, and Peg Trent did meet with city officials, and she has some additional comments.
Ms. Trent?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Peg Trent, Chief Counsel. As the county managers indicated yesterday, I had an opportunity to meet with the county manager, the mayor, as well as the fiscal officer to, well, we did, oh, excuse me, the city manager, my bad, to discuss this particular TIF district creation. Just for clarification, after speaking with them, and it wasn't evident in the documents that was provided to us because there wasn't like we normally see in the resolution and other items, this actually would not, this creation would not bring into play your ability to veto, because the underlying property in this particular project and what they're creating is owned by the city, the school district, and a church right now, and they're all tax exempt. And under the statute, under the 121771D, there's a line that indicates that it's only applicable, your veto, when it's private property. And none of these tax dollars will be going to the private development of that project by Car Bank is underlying all of this. Actually, they're using the funding in order to build the park out and the infrastructure that is necessary for surrounding that development. Ultimately, the development with Car Bank Real Estate will have also offices and other items that will generate income. So right now, we are not receiving any beneficial, if you would, so we would not be, in my legal opinion, adversely affected in that regard.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trent. Questions, starting with Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Trent, thank you for that clarification or that elaboration, because I was looking at this, and I was going to make a motion to remand this, but if we could get something in writing that specifies the outline that you just offered from the city, I would very much appreciate that.
Absolutely. And I know, looking at this, I knew that this would become some questions, so we took the initiative, staff and I, to meet with their staff, because it wasn't clear like we normally would see. So I will do such.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Hara?
As usual, the normal song and dance is that, well, this is not on the tax rolls now, and so therefore, the TIF is not going to create any burdens. But however, the county will be obligated to provide services to the businesses, and if there are some residential components to this, there will be services that will be required. And obviously, that will be spread over the existing tax base. And I just want to remind people that currently, tax increment finance districts divert $33 million a year of property taxes from the public coffers, $58 million in industrial revenue bonds, and $2.5 million on tax increment finance districts on sales tax. So that's a total of approximately $93.5 million a year, and that's as of 2022, and each year, the amount goes up.
Chair, if I could clarify that statement, because I want to make it clear, this, from my understanding, and we'll get this in writing, this is the private development, no, this is not going to the private development or any of this. This is going to land that is going to be a park that is owned by the government. This is an infrastructure surrounding, so I'm not sure that that's accurate to say that, you know, this is benefiting and we're not getting a return. I think there's no adverse effect, and the state statute does not define adverse effect. And so the case law has indicated, looking into the financial, and in this particular case, there is no, I'm not seeing what you're outlining for these other projects.
Well, and again, not to go deep down into the weeds about the benefits or the lack thereof of TIF districts or IRBs. People can talk about that as much as they want in their Commissioner comments. I will note that when you're having a conversation about TIF or IRBs, you do have to look at the total economic impact, including what the land was previously generating, what's the residual economic impact. But again, a debate that is bigger than this particular issue regarding this notice of hearing from the city of Westwood, which does have its own nuance, and appreciate the chief legal counsel's advice and recommendation, or, well, advice regarding the legality of the county considering a potential veto here. Look forward to receiving that in writing for some additional consideration by this Board. But let's limit our comments to this issue. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And along those lines, I do want to make sure, because Commissioner O'Hare makes a valid point, if it does include residential, your understanding is it does not. So I very much would like to know from the city of Westwood what this does and doesn't do. I'm not saying that what you offered is incomplete, but I just want to make sure that that's recorded. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Yes, I've looked at all the materials that were provided with this item, and there is a brochure that says that the proposed development includes mixed office use and retail and a new park over double size of Dennis Park. And I specifically looked and did not see anything that had housing, that mentioned housing.
Thank you very much. Ms. Postock-Ferguson, any further report?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, then we're going to move to Commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Myers, anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This week, I attended the NACO Conference, National Association of Counties, and it was an excellent conference. I was our delegate, voting delegate. Everything went smoothly. I gained a lot of knowledge, had an awful lot of conversations and networking with other commissioners from across the country, and felt that it was very beneficial. I do want to mention that at today's meeting, some people are wondering probably why we, some of us are masking, and I will explain why I am masking. I'm doing this mask out of courtesy to others. I was exposed to a person or persons that contracted COVID, and I have been testing negative. I feel fine, but out of courtesy, I wanted to continue wearing my mask around others. And at today's meeting, I had someone come up to the dais, and they were upset that I was wearing a mask. And I felt that was very small and just something that didn't need to be said, especially when they have no idea of the reasoning behind wearing the mask. And I can only say this, COVID's still here. It's not gone. It might be mild, but it can be dangerous. And a person that has lost friends, family, you take it very seriously, and I take it very seriously. But I wanted to explain why I am wearing a mask, and again, it is simply out of courtesy to others.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. How about Commissioner Ashcraft next?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No direct comments, but a question related to CIRI. I was wondering if CIRI collects or has access to, if I'm calling this, if I'm phrasing this correctly, labor participation rates as opposed to unemployment rates. There was a piece on NPR, no, it was BB, one of those stations, that talked about unemployment versus labor participation, and what the best reflection of the workforce really is, given the change in dynamics related to working at home and early retirement and so forth. So I just was wondering if those stats were readily available, and if so, if we could be provided that information.
I can inquire and find out.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner O'Hara?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had five folks speak at our public comments, which continue to be banned from broadcast. Ben Hobart was talking about the commission's Resolution 1723, which highly recommends people to take the COVID vaccine. However, there are several people that have had very negative results from those shots, and he was bringing those issues to light. Debbie Detmer was talking about the falsities of wind and solar and the rising electrical rates, which will continue to hit those on fixed incomes, along with the increase in property taxes. Patricia Latner, she indicated that it's difficult to get to the meetings during the day. day, and that she was very upset in what she stated as censorship because of the ban on the broadcast of public comments. And then Denise Ogilvy, I hope that I'm pronouncing that correctly. She's from Catholic Charities, and she was supporting the permanent homeless shelter. And then Galena Van Horn, she was talking about the increase in property taxes and the double shock of the increase of electrical rates. I continued to enjoy the Tuesday afternoon Bible studies at the Juvenile Detention Center with Ron Stiles. The impact of that interaction with those young people is just absolutely incredible. And then I know that there's a lot of rhetoric about the high temperatures that we are experiencing right now, but I want to put a little, put this into context. I believe it was August, this was in nineteen thirty-six. The highest temperature in August in Kansas City was one hundred and thirteen degrees, or sixteen days of a hundred-degree and above temperatures, and a total of fifty-three non-consecutive hundred-degree days that summer. Here's some information on other areas in Indiana. In Collegeville, one hundred and sixteen degrees. In Landtak in Logan, Iowa, one hundred and seventeen degrees. In Fredonia and Alton, one hundred and twenty-one degrees. In Maryland, Cumberland and Frederick, one hundred and nine degrees, et cetera, et cetera. Missouri and Clinton and Lamar, one hundred and eighteen degrees. So this is weather, and welcome to Kansas. Oh, and I want one other thing. Hundred ninety-first and one sixty-nine highway, we have a dangerous situation down there because we do not have signals at that intersection. One sixty-nine highway is a very heavily traveled roadway, and the development in that area continues to put pressure. And I will be, in October, I will be attending some meetings with KDOT and attempting to see if we can find some funding for that signal. I know that this is in Spring Hill and that this is not within our jurisdiction. However, we sent fifteen million dollars up to the Panasonic development for roads and a fire station, so I think that we need to take this seriously. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like Commissioner Myers, I was privileged to attend the National Association of Counties Conference this past week, and housing was one of the main topics of discussion at the conference, and I was able to hear new ideas, talk to people who are struggling with similar housing issues. In fact, all counties across the country, no matter what size they are, are struggling with affordable housing shortages. We talked about some various tools that counties can use, and I've heard from people who are utilizing some of those tools in their own counties. One of the things I found very interesting was one place is doing what they're calling affordable, quote, hero housing for law enforcement, teachers, and first responders. And I thought that was a very interesting idea, because so often, when we hear about affordable housing, we think of people with the very lowest incomes. We don't think about our teachers and our firefighters and other middle-income people that are struggling to afford a home in Johnson County. So I'm looking forward to sharing those ideas with our housing staff and continuing to work toward further developing what the county can do in terms of helping our community meet those housing shortages. Also, like Commissioner Myers, I also was exposed to COVID in a pretty close quarters, and I am not sick, but out of courtesy, I'm also wearing a mask. You know, I was sitting here looking at this front row of veterans, and I thought, wearing a mask to potentially protect those heroes from getting COVID and potentially dying, because many of them were quite older, quite elderly, that's a very small thing. If I have to wear a mask to ensure that our heroes can stay healthy, I'm glad to do it. So that's my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanslick. Commissioner Allen Brand?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to let everyone know that the Johnson County Fair is coming up. It starts on Monday, and the parade is on Saturday. I also would like to make a comment that I did contact, come in contact with COVID, and out of courtesy to the others on the dais and our audience, I have chosen to call in by Zoom. I think everybody has the right, if you want to get vaccinated or not, but I also think it's a common courtesy of protecting others by wearing a mask, if that helps someone not contract either the flu or COVID or whatever that should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen Brand, and thank you to the courtesy of those who have chosen to either stay home today or to wear a mask. I appreciate the courtesy for your fellow commissioners and for our guests today. Thank you for doing that. As we move from the summer into the fall period, we'll continue to heed guidance from our Department of Health and Environment of how we can keep our community safe and healthy. And so, thank you for being a good model of that on this dais. There were a lot of particular recognitions of our staff today, whether it be the Medical Examiner's Office or EMS, our budget team for thirty-one consecutive years, winning that GFOA Budget Award. Again, it is incumbent upon me to say thank you to the amazing staff that works here in Johnson County and garners so many accolades from across the nation. And I particularly want to recognize Ms. Penny Postock Ferguson and her team that leads this team of staff. It's always a pleasure to be able to recognize great service. We want to make sure that we can continue having this amazing service. So as we have done in the proposed budget, I'd ask us to continue to make sure that we maintain a competitive working environment for our employees and make sure that we can take care of them as they continue to take care of us. With that, we're going to close this morning's meeting. We're going to take a very brief break. We'll be back at eleven o'clock for agenda review. Thank you all very much for your patience. We're adjourned.